It's today, May 9.
Gee, it's May 9.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, May 9, 2022 school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Arndt.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Inspector Roche.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Lalaberty.
Here.
Chair Diaz.
Here.
At 7:00 present.
Great, and I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. First up on our agenda is the approval of our meeting agenda minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, as well as the minutes from our committee, the whole and regular meeting minutes from April 25, 2022, our public relations, community engagement committee minutes from April 14, 2022, our school board finance committee minutes from April 20, 2022, and our superintendent executive committee meeting minutes from April 21, 2022. We have been busy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion? All who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm watching Gary's. Great, we're moving on to our quality in action, and tonight it's high school principal, Mr. Ochaki.
Dr. Zabrino, School Board Chair Diaz, additional school board members in the greater South St. Paul school community. My name is Chuck Ochaki, and I'm very proud, the very proud principal of South St. Paul High School. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to talk about Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday. It is one of my favorite topics to talk about. I believe that this innovative program is positively changing the direction of the high school. As you recall, all students with a C minus or lower are required to come into school on Wednesdays for additional support. All students may come into school, but those with a C minus need to come in. For the students who choose to work from home because they have Cs or higher in all their classes, it's not a free day. Those students get to do their work, they get to choose to do their work at home or come to school, where they decide to complete their assignments. So in trimester two, we reduced the number of failing grades from the start of trimester to end of trimester by 55%. We increased the number of As earned by students by 8%. We increased the number of Bs earned by students by 35%, and we reduced the number of students who needed to come into school on Wednesdays by 22%. So at the end of trimester two, our students failed at a lower rate than the pre-pandemic period. So the data is clear to me that I think the program's working, but the last time I presented to you, you asked me to bring along some staff and students. I heard you. I listened.
I didn't ask.
Okay? To share their perspectives on Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you to our teachers, Ellie Ritzer and Jesse Rock, and our student, Daniel Everson. So come on up.
Hi, I'm Ellie Ritzer. I'm a special ed teacher at the high school, and I've found that What I Need Wednesday is incredibly helpful for my students. So I'm the reading resource teacher, which means most of my students have dyslexia or a different reading disability, and they're reading well below grade level, which means that their general education classes are extremely difficult for them. So having that extra time on Wednesdays is incredibly helpful, and those smaller groups where they can get more attention from the teacher is really helpful. And just to like show like how well it's working, I've got a student on my caseload who I've had for four years. He earned two credits last year. This year, he's passed every single class, and it's not just passing, but he's got As and Bs.
Hey.
Yes, very exciting.
That's cool.
Wow.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jesse Rock, and I teach biology at South St. Paul, and I've been teaching there for about seven years. So I absolutely love What I Need Wednesdays. It is my favorite thing that we've done this year. It is the first time, in my experience with education, that we've done something that's proactive about student failure and helping students succeed, instead of constantly being reactive of saying, you need to come in for summer school, or you need to do credit recovery. Personally, just from my own lens, this year I've had the lowest failure rates for biology. So I have 173 students, and in both first and second trimester, my failure rate is under 10% for my classes, which is pre-pandemic and during pandemic, it would be 30, 35%. And just one thing, speaking to it, just as far as education and teaching goes, anytime you're teaching a topic, if you're teaching a unit to a set of 35 students, there's going to be one-third of them that don't get it the first time. And if there's any good responsive teaching happening, that teacher is going to go back and make sure, in class, make sure that those students cover that topic. So whether it's doing some additional content, or maybe doing test corrections, and there's teachers that were doing that before What I Need Wednesdays, but now we have a whole entire day to sit. I used to do test corrections with those one-third of the students while having 25 students in the background trying to run the show and trying to do what I'm trying to do. Now I get to have those exact same students that didn't get the concept the first time, and I get to sit with them in a class of seven students, sit down with them one-on-one, and make sure that they understand it, and it's drastically reducing my failure rate. And I absolutely love it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Everson. I'm a student at South St. Paul, and What I Need Wednesday has definitely helped me continue to stay motivated to keep my grades up. Pre-pandemic and during the pandemic, I worked pretty hard to try to maintain a high GPA, and I've always been motivated just inside of me to keep that high GPA and to do more than just pass every class. To me, What I Need Wednesday seems like the first thing from the school and the administration to encourage students to do more than just pass the class. For students who might choose to spend most of their outside of class time doing extracurriculars and things like that, What I Need Wednesday is a good time for those students who are busy outside of school to have the opportunity to come in if they need it, or to have a little more of a relaxing day if they've got a busy day ahead of them with matches or meets for their sports. Something that I really liked about What I Need Wednesday is that it's helped some of my friends who have struggled to keep their grades up, to now have a tangible piece of motivation to do more than just pass their classes if their parents have set, or the student I'm thinking of, his parents used to have him only be allowed to hang out with his friends if he maintained a certain grade point average. And now with What I Need Wednesday, there's this whole new level of motivation for students to do more than just pass a class, and that's been cool to see and helpful also for students like me who have maintained a high grade point average, to come in when they need it and get the extra help that they need to when they need to, and to reward them when they don't need to.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So Daniel's a funny story. I walked into his chemistry class, and he very much just looked at me and said, Mr. Ochaki, who created Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday? Kind of deadpan like that, right? Like, no, I couldn't even read like where he was going with. And I said, well, Daniel, it depends. If you like it, the staff. If you hate it, it was me. So it's so cool that he's here. In addition to the school community members that you heard, Mrs. Alejandrino wanted to be here tonight but could not, and so she wrote me a little note and said, would you please read this to the school board? So according to Mrs. Alejandrino, comparing this Win Wednesday school year to previous school years is a great way to look at success of the program. I think back on several years ago and remember how hard it was to find the time, time to help struggling students, time for students to make up assessments, time for students to get organized with missing work, and even time to build relationships with students who may have given up on school. Win Wednesday has changed all of this. There's now time. In my own classroom, I have witnessed students who have failed my classes actually pass because of Win Wednesday. I finally had the time to have more deep and meaningful conversations with students who would have given up on school otherwise. These students know that when they come in on Wednesdays, the support they need is there. Now, remember, Wednesdays are for everyone. All students have some kind of assignment in each class, but because it's shorter, there's plenty of time for students to work with their teachers to get caught up on missing work. This varies week to week, and although many of the same students return each week, there are some that need to come in one week but work hard to be able to stay home the next. Some students rarely come in on Wednesdays because they're all caught up in all their classes. That's a win for them. What are they doing after they do their Wednesday assignments at home? Well, I know a few who are doing extra studying above and beyond the course requirements, a few who are applying for colleges and scholarships, a few helping with family tasks or activities, a few who go to the doctor or dental appointments because they know they won't miss school, a few who actually get the sleep they need, a few who spend the entire day studying for a test or completing a big project, and a few who just enjoy a midweek break for their own mental health. One innovative program. The program isn't perfect, as we're already looking at ways to make it better for next year, but let me leave you with this. I've been teaching at South St. Paul for 14 years, and this is the first year where I feel like we actually have a plan to help our failing students. So, and then just this past week, South St. Paul High School received some great news. SSP High School was awarded the 2122 Silver Star of Innovation Award sponsored by Horace Mann and MSP, the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals. For the Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday, this award is designed to recognize member schools statewide for the development and support of innovative education programs in their school. I've been asked to talk about Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday at the MASP Summer Conference. I'll be presenting about the program at one of the dinners and presenting breakout portion of workshops during the conference for other schools interested. So we're really proud of the work that we've done to receive this award, but know that we're currently reviewing our program so that we can strengthen it and make it even better. Thank you.
Chuck, before you leave.
Yeah, questions?
You knew this was coming, didn't you?
I did, Bill.
People probably don't know, but we did, as he said, we got the Horace Mann Silver Star Award, but what I shared with Chuck earlier was it was just the wrong committee because Chuck has got, should, deserves a gold award. So anybody here that feels the need, stand up and give him a hand, okay?
I am. It happens.
No, thank you.
Yes.
You match your shirt.
Yes, thank you. Yes?
Question. I've heard some talk about how this is, that ninth graders are struggling with What I Need Wednesday, that the 11th and 12th graders, you know, are really handling it, but that maybe they're too young to be doing this. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, I would have actually reversed it.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we see most of our ninth and 10th graders in the building on Wednesdays anyway because they're not meeting that requirement. I would tell you the ninth, so I went in and observed, one of the things I wanted to do is see what our teachers are doing on Wednesdays. And our ninth and 10th grade teachers are doing a really nice job of breaking down components of what the kids need to work on. I would say our failure rate in ninth grade is lower than it's ever been.
Okay.
Which is a good indicator, and we actually have kids, so it was cool. Dr. Schmidt taught me how to use a pivot table to take all the data, right, 15,000 grades over two trimesters and try to figure out like, is it working? And one of the things we were really excited about is 80% of our grades are C minuses or higher. Like, that's pretty cool, be able to say, right? I think with 11th and 12th graders, we're really worried about curriculum, like we're losing some curriculum time. So what can we do differently to structure that, those Wednesdays to help those kids too?
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yes, Monica.
So I have a question for the teachers.
Yeah. Come on up.
So what do you, I would like to hear more about, what do you do with your curriculum time, with your teacher share time? Like, what projects have you accomplished because you had that collaborative time or anything around that?
Well, as a special education teacher, I don't work, there's not a lot of collaborative projects with other teachers. I help more with modifying and accommodating. So that has been really nice because our caselots are very large this year, so I have a lot of students that I need to make sure those, they're getting their needs met in the classrooms. So having that time really helps on Wednesday morning. I will say, like, Wednesday, when the kids are there, is the hardest I work all week because there's so many kids there who, you know, on like a Tuesday, they're all doing the same thing, but on Wednesday, you've got, my classes are very large on Wednesdays because the kids like to stay in my room, and so I'll have like 12, 13 kids in there, and I usually don't have that many, all doing different things. So, but they're all very good about like, we'll go through their grades and see what they need to work on, and they have an assignment to do first, and then they know after that it's work time. But yeah, the Wednesday morning time has been super helpful, just in terms of like making sure that I can help other teachers like Jesse, make, help my kids like meet their IEP needs and accommodations.
So as far as that teacher collaborative time, that's, in my opinion, that's been one of our most valuable assets this year. A lot of teachers are constantly just analyzing trend lines of students, like, oh, okay, we've got a couple tardies now, oh, we have a few missing assignments, and you want to try to catch those students at a certain point and try to redirect them to say, hey, like, let's nip this in the, like, let's take care of this right now while we can, so that we can start. And I, I could give you a laundry list of students in the 10th grade that our team has, has worked with, and we've had those, you know, one-off conversations of, hey, I noticed you're not coming to your third period class. Like, what's the deal with that? And let's get you on track. So that, that right there with that collaborative time with bar, I don't know, okay, yeah, that's, so that's our bar meeting, and that's been a super valuable asset. And then, like Ms. Ritzer was saying, Wednesdays are my favorite days, they are also my busiest days. I will walk into my classroom this Wednesday, and I will have one student that has not been there for two weeks because they are on a vacation or something. I have one student that's missing seven assignments. I have one student that needs to retake a test. So you, your first goal is just to kind of get everybody settled in and figure out what they need to do, and then your next step is just to work with the students one-on-one. Okay, you need help with this assignment, like, let me get you set up, here's how you do the first problem, I'll check back in with you in five minutes, and then you're essentially just doing that. I mean, hopefully you don't have 20, hopefully you have a smaller number, so, but that's what we do with students on Wednesdays, so.
If I ever get questions from the community, it's frequently around, is it, around a theme of like, is it changing the amount of curriculum students are getting, or is it changing the content? So can you speak to that for people who have those questions?
Yeah, I would love to. So I think many of those concerns about curriculum and what's the deal with curriculum, or, you know, is it getting watered down and stuff like that? I think many of those concerned families would be coming from the concern of, I want my student to be prepared for the collegiate level. I want to make sure that they're ready to go, that when they graduate, they're excelling at a college level. And in my opinion, What I Need Wednesdays makes the most sense for juniors and, it makes sense for ninth and 10th graders, but especially juniors and seniors. If we want to talk about curriculum and preparing our students for the next level, the senior is about to leave a high school setting and then go on to a college setting where they're going to be attending class two days a week. So if there are concerns with curriculum, I would say that one thing that we need to do as a staff, we need to focus on, you know, for those higher level classes, what are we doing on those Wednesdays for the students at home to really strengthen the learning to make sure that they're really getting the most out of their days? So if there, if there are concerns, and it's like, well, you know, in history, my 12th grader's not, you know, they just had like a little Google form or whatever, which could be happening, but we're currently focusing on that and trying to strengthen and saying, what can we do to, I mean, they're going to go to college next year and be in class two days a week. So how can we start modeling some of that to make it, still have the same curriculum, but still offer the same support?
Wonderful. Thank you.
I had a question too about, I bet this is the first time in history where students are so aware of their grades. I mean, it sounds like every week, you know where you are, what's due, yeah. I mean, you even know, right? You even know what your friends' grades are.
Yeah, they, they are hyper-aware of their grades. Yep. And they are constantly having follow-up conversations of, hey, I turned this assignment in on Friday.
Have you scored it yet?
Yeah, yeah, so they, they know, they know, more than any time before.
That awareness, I think, is so great so that they can put all of those pieces together, right? The responsibility, what my responsibility as a student, I, I know what it is, and then your responsibility, teacher, have you graded it yet? Because I need to know. Do I need to come in on Wednesday or not? Like, I think that's really important in building really great life skills.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else?
Have you, have you found that stressful as a teacher, knowing to like, that you have to be like so on top of your grading?
For teachers that are not typically on top of their grading, it would, it would probably be more stressful than usual, but I've always kind of just made a habit of making sure when things get turned and they get graded. So it is not that stressful for me because I kind of try to stay on top of that, but it would be a new stress if you are typically behind the eight ball as a teacher.
Chuck, what tweaks and evolution of this is in the future for the program?
So Johnny, I think you asked a question of Jesse, right, about 11th and 12th and getting prepared, right? Really looking at, how are we using the time that we have the kids in the classroom in comparison to the time that they're not in the classroom, and how do we use that time better, right? So most people, most people may not understand that in a typical classroom, right, if it's a 57-minute class, our teachers aren't talking for 57 minutes. It's more like they're probably talking for 30 or 40, and then there's this work time that we build into the classroom to allow the students to start to explore. Well, how do we shift that? Maybe that work time becomes Wednesday. And so we've had some 11th and 12th grade teachers who really look at their curriculum and say, Monday and Tuesday are really heavy curriculum-wise, but Wednesday, I'm going to give you this time to study the, the material that you need to know, right, to try to prepare them for college. So when they leave our school, right, we know the professor may or may not tell you whether the, what book to read, right? It's in the syllabus, and you better understand that, and trying to start moving in that direction. So that would be our biggest thing, is how do we strengthen Wednesdays for our juniors and seniors? Yeah?
Chuck, do you have any sense of how this might impact graduation rates this year? I know the pandemic across the state, you know, had a, you know, significant impact on graduation rates. Do you see that panning out this year?
I don't think we'll see the, right, what I want to say is yes.
Right, of course, right?
I don't know if we're going to see it this year because of where we were in March, you know, since 2019, 21, you know.
Right, the kids.
As we're coming back. I think though, you'll see a trend in the next five years as graduation rates going back up to the, where we were in the 90s and where we should be, because our kids are more aware now. Like, if you ask a ninth grader, if you don't get a credit, what does that mean? They actually understand that now. Where last year, two years ago, or, you know, 2017, I could ask any ninth grader, hey, how you doing? And they'd be like, great! And then I would pull up their grades, be like, that's not great. Right? They all know. And the C minus has become the new F, and the C minus is a curse word.
Bar has, the bar has been raised for the students.
And I'll hear it tomorrow in my connections class. So I think, Monica, you asked about that collaborative time. So every one of our general ed teachers on a team that meets, I work with the juniors. That collaborative time has allowed us to try a bunch of different things to zero in on how to best support kids. So the last couple of weeks, we've had individual meetings where the team of teachers come together, and they meet with a student just to figure out what's going on. It's super intimidating for our juniors to walk into the conference room and have to meet with five adults and explain like why I'm not coming to school or anything. But what we do is we follow the bar model, so we start off with student strengths. And the first thing the kids hear are all these compliments and what we believe in them and the student strengths. And it's been amazing, we've done it for two weeks, to watch these kids come in, kind of like meek, like, oh my gosh, right, to hear how the adults feel about them, to sit up straight and to look at us and say, hey, I'm going to make a change, right? That, that's something that we would never have tried before because each of the teachers would have worked individually in a silo to try to figure out what was going on with this kid. And now we have the collection, right? We're all smarter together, so.
And it wouldn't be comparing, an easy comparison, but I think it would be safe to say it would be impacting graduation rates. We have students who came into the year with two credits and are now passing all their classes, so there's going to be a lag based on that pandemic where kids fell behind on credits, but certainly I think it's going to have a big impact on credit attainment.
Absolutely, yeah. Awesome. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to all of you for making this work.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Hey, thanks for letting us try something different, right? Like, you guys took a risk, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Take care.
Good to see you, Daniel.
All right. And we have another great presentation on deck for us.
Well, me.
Right?
Your judgment, huh?
A Packer graduate.
Lots of teasing up here.
A South St. Paul graduate, you knew I'm going to do a good job. Come on! All right. What do I have to hit? Having to come up here anyway.
I don't think I've seen that angle exactly before.
It's a great picture of the field from under the, under the tunnel there.
What a great shot. I love that.
So somebody was telling me that on the neighborhood talk, there is a photographer who every day takes a different picture from somewhere in South St. Paul.
Really?
It's one of the neighbors' employees' husbands.
Nice.
Yeah, Jenny Sanford's husband. Yeah, and, and I think, with Lisa, and she was showing me, like, gave me goosebumps. Some of these pictures are just amazing.
Such a great angle.
There we go. Good. Well, I want to thank you all for allowing me to come and talk. My name is Beth Baumann. I'm the chair of Neighbors, Inc., this year in our 50th year of service to Northern Dakota County. And we're usually, Charlie Thompson is my sidekick, the executive from Neighbors, but he's, has a Inver Grove Heights school board meeting, he's on that school board. So thank you for allowing me to come and talk a little bit about Neighbors and how we're celebrating this year. And I think most of you know about Neighbors, I'm going to talk a little bit about it, but this is our mission statement, and we've got some really fun photography in here, too. Just, we had a professional come in and take pictures of what's been going on. So 1972 to 2022, how are we going to celebrate? That's 50 years of service to Northern Dakota County. We're going to be remembering the past, celebrating our present, and planning for our future. And just a little more information for those who are a little unfamiliar or don't remember about Neighbors, we were founded by volunteers from six, six local churches in South St. Paul during a time when our economy was tanking and jobs were lost. It's a nonprofit human services organization, and we serve the service area of Northern Dakota County, all the cities in Northern Dakota County. We have a volunteer-based model, and it's supported by 17 paid staff. And for those of you who know about nonprofits, that's not a lot of people for the number of people that we serve. So we depend heavily on volunteers and really cherish our volunteers. We are funded primarily by individual donors, foundations, and community partners like the South St. Paul School District. So people ask, and after the pandemic, I'm always surprised when they ask, is something, someplace like Neighbors still needed? And of course it is. It's, it's amazing how much, you know, I think our service has increased by 59% in the last three years. And all of our visitors experience some of these barriers, whether it's the rising cost and lower, lower income, or loss of jobs, medical expenses unplanned, just unplanned expenses. Your furnace goes out in the winter in Minnesota, your car, unplanned car breakdown, job loss, mental health issues, and financial literacy, which is a new one, and you'll be hearing us talking more about it. How do I get out of debt? How do I put a budget together? What can I do to try to be successful? So, remembering the past. So the picture in the right-hand corner is of Bob Adams, our first director. He was there on that very first eventful night when these church people got together and said, we got to do something to help our neighbors. And our original mission statement was providing neighborly assistance in an organized fashion primarily through the use of volunteers. And we've stayed pretty true to that mission statement. And some of the programs we had in the early years were food shelves in the multiple churches, used clothing giveaway, Come As You Are, which is a social program, Christmas gift program, transportation and medical appointments, and telecare, which was for people that were[1734.95] Christmas gift program, transportation and medical appointments, and telecare, which was for people that were homebound. And as we celebrate the present, you can see that we're still doing many of those. What we're most known for is hunger relief, the food shelf. But during the pandemic, it forced us to pivot, as it forced everyone to pivot. As we were primarily a come-in-and-shop kind of a food shelf, we had to come up with curbside pickup, home delivery, and in-person shopping in a place called Neighbors Express. And what we did during the pandemic is four buildings in West St. Paul and South St. Paul, we're going to be expanding that soon, they're buildings where we have a lot of clients. And rather than have them have to come down to Neighbors or us deliver it, we drop food off in their community room and they can pick it up in their building. So it's been very successful. Resiliency, the clothes closet has been around since the very beginning. It wasn't called that. Now what we do, which I think is really great for people, is rather than a piece of paper that says you get free stuff, you get a gift card. So like everybody else, when you go to the clothes closet, thrift shop, you just, they just run your gift card. And it's, it's been really a good morale booster for some of our clients. We also have small sums grants for things like car repair or furnace repair or unplanned expenses. And then the holiday gift program. Last year, we served 750 families and 115 seniors in the holiday gift program. And people are so generous, the sponsors of that program that donate, that donate all their time and money and to buy gifts for the families are just great. Financial empowerment, I mentioned, that's our new program. And the goal there, we have trained advisors, is to decrease debt, increase savings and achieve financial well-being. And really, it's as simple as, for some people, as becoming banked. Because right now, they're going to one of those check cashing places and having to pay so much money to get your paycheck cashed. This way, we are working with some nonprofit organizations and some banks that they can get a bank account and so start a savings account. So it's, it's really exciting and it's something that we're going to see take off. We've already been successful with a number of families. Community engagement, where would we be without our communities, without our volunteers? We would be lost because 98% of the work that's done at Neighbors is done by volunteers. So we focus on them. Again, we're celebrating them in our 50 years. We celebrate our community partnerships with our school districts, our cities, our community clubs and organizations. And we also offer internships for high school seniors and college kids that are interested in understanding what happens at a nonprofit. And we also have events. And our most notable event is the Great Neighbors Duck Race, which is on the first Saturday of October on Southview Boulevard. So please join us this year for that. And our third leg of celebration is planning for our future. As I said, 50th anniversary celebration, we started at the beginning of this year. We started with Trivia Tuesdays, social media, we've got stories, we've got things in different newspapers. And we have interviewed a lot of people that were there or have been involved for many years. So if you get a chance to check it out, either on social media or our website, there's a lot of great information that's pretty interesting of why it started and some people that have been there since the very beginning. So very fun. And I also want to invite everyone to our celebration event, September 16th and 17th. Friday night, the 16th, we will be having a band at our building in South St. Paul and food trucks and fun stuff like that. And then Saturday is all family fun, different booths, fun things to do. We're doing tie dye because, you know, 70s were tie dye, some fun things for the family. So we invite everyone to come. And then our community engagement center, we're going to stop calling it the food shelf, we're calling it the community engagement center. We've got new exterior signage and I know Chris has been really worried about the letter that fell off and it's been misspelled for years. We've changed all the signage and freshened that up. We have a wall mural that's been created by a local artist, celebrating all 50 years. So each of the letters celebrates part of the era and has pictures and is great fun. So we'll be showing that. Please feel free to stop down and see how we've changed things. Because if, for those of you who have not been in that food shelf lately, it's like shopping at a grocery store. It's pretty cool. We also are remodeling our lobby area to serve that financial empowerment. So people will come in and have computers to work on, work with the advisors and look for jobs, things like that. So we're excited about that. We ask you all to support us with time, talent and treasure. We have onsite and onsite volunteer opportunities. You can host a food drive, you can attend an event and you can help celebrate with us this year. Thank you. And for more information, there's our website information. I will take any questions if you have any.
Well, I'll just start off and say thank you for coming and congratulations on 50 years.
Thank you.
And the sign does look really good. The missing letter has been replaced. Just a couple of notes I made that jumped out during the presentation. That the whole idea of the financial literacy, you know, teaching people how to reduce debt and increase savings. And we talked in the Win Wednesday about, you know, being proactive and working with people. I think that's a good example of that. So that's, that was very thoughtful to come up with a program such as that.
They're always thinking that, staff. They're doing a great job.
And then also just, I was very encouraged when you talked about the relationship with the schools. You know, we are a source of volunteers, but then also to hear you talk about offering the internships and such. It's just, it's a real win-win relationship. So encourage you to, to continue to develop that.
Absolutely.
Most of all, 50 years. That's a congratulations.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do you have anything else?
I also think to do that, coming, to celebrate that this year, coming off of what is, for any charitable organization, the last couple of years have been especially taxing and trying and the need has been so high, the work that you have done is incredibly valuable.
And thank you. I extend my thanks from all of Neighbors, all the staff and volunteers. They've worked very hard to make it successful. All hands were on deck.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And I just, some of the nice things is we were able to buy a van with some of the government money so that we could make deliveries and help people out. So that was also helpful.
Tremendous.
That's great. What is the best way if somebody wants to either donate their time or their money or their goods? Like what do people do?
So a couple of different ways. So if you want to donate your time, there, right on the website, there's, it lists all the different volunteer activities that you can volunteer and what kind of shifts there are. And then our volunteer coordinator would be happy to talk to you about any of them. If you have things for the clothes closet and we take household items as well as we want to make people successful at work, at school, in their home. So we have also things for your kitchen and bathroom and bedroom. So if you have things like that, we're open Wednesdays through Friday and one Saturday a month from like nine to five. So you can drop them off there. If you have food, we're open all weekdays from eight o'clock till 4:30. And they can be dropped off anytime. You just ring the bell and someone will open the garage door and take anything you've got. If, also, if you want to organize a food drive in your neighborhood or organization, they're happy to provide barrels and help and pick up any food that's collected.
I'm going to do one for my 50th.
All right. Thank you.
That's great. You can't be 50, Linda. Next year.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good for you.
I can't believe I just said it on TV.
You did. And it's now on the record.
Now, yeah.
Did you get that in the notes, Lisa?
Next year, 50, 50.
All right. Anything else from anyone? Wendy?
Yeah, I just, I recall probably about eight to 10 years ago, when I had donated some clothing to the clothes closet. I went into the clothes closet area just to, you know, to see what they had. And I'll never forget it. There was a gentleman there who had received a gift certificate from Neighbors, you know, to purchase some things. And this was back when, unfortunately, he had been unemployed for a long time. And he, he was there with his certificate because he had gotten a great opportunity to start a job within a great interview. And he was there fortunate to find a complete dressy outfit to purchase, a suit, shoes, everything to go with him. And he was so kind and so generous with, with the staff, the ladies that were there helping him. And it was such, it just literally brought tears to my eyes, hearing him talk how thankful and grateful he was for that. And also, my employer, Oxendale's Grocery Store Market in West St. Paul, we collect food shelf bags. Of course, I, I'm the one of persons who bags them up normally anyway. So we give food donation bags three days a week. And our store also collects cash donations about four times a year.
Nice.
So it's, it's a great opportunity to, to show your caring and your community service. So we thank our customers. And like I said, that gentleman that day was so pleased and so honored that he could get himself a suit for his new employment.
Yep, thank you. And we really thank Oxendale's. They've been a great supporter. But what we try to do in the, in the clothes closet is if people are looking for clothes to get back to work, we, they are really good. The people that work there are really good at helping you pick out stuff so that you can wear it to work. So it's great.
Can, do you ever put out barrels for the Night to Unite in August? Or could a neighborhood?
You could. We don't want to conflict with fill the backpack, which is what we do at night.
I forgot about that.
As a school board person.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
Yeah, so, you know, we don't want to, we don't ever want to, yeah, put people in a tough, tough spot.
True.
But we did do a little challenge and Chris can tell you about it. Our neighborhood, Park Lane Neighborhood challenged a couple of other neighborhoods to a food collection during March, which is Food Share Month. So that was kind of fun. Of course, Park Lane won, but I'm just saying.
In our church, we do the first half of the alphabet of your last name, the second half. And then, yeah, they, they weigh and it's, it's a huge deal.
Yeah, competition is good.
Yeah, very healthy. No punching.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
Just have one comment. You know, I'm new to the area and just got to do a tour there last week.
That's right.
And just the passion of the staff, you know, is just evident and all the aspects of the work. And then just the experience that's being provided there, the dignity that people are treated with. You walk in and it looks like a grocery store, you know, like you said, to shop at, you know, any, any kind of clothing store where you can browse. And so just kudos to you all for the dignity that you bring to the folks who need those services. Because they should access them and not have to feel, you know, everybody falls on a hard time. And what a great way to just make people feel supported and.
Good. Thank you. We're so glad you came down.
Oh, it's great.
Good. And I just want to say, I know Chuck's gone, but let me say, as a citizen of South St. Paul, Win Wednesday, yeah. We're like tax dollars at work. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for allowing me to come and speak.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Onto public listening session. We had no public listening session submissions this week. Just a reminder that on the website, you can fill out the form if you want to come and visit us once a month. We are here now at the airport, 4:15 until 4:45. And then, uh, school board vice chair, John Ross.
Quick report from our committee of the whole meeting. The school board had meets prior to this public portion of our board meetings to kind of do some of the work session and the things to help us progress the work that we do. We had a discussion about kind of an enrollment update and where we are on our projected enrollment. And we're pretty close to on track to what we had projected for the year. We understand as a district, we are facing declining enrollment, as many districts across the state are. So it is something we are watching and kind of trying to be carefully attentive of. Then we also got a great report from Chad Schmidt, from the Learning and Equity Department, update on IB across the district and some of the trainings that are available to teachers and staff over the summer and sort of status of where those programs are within the district. And then also talking about many events across the community that us as a board will be able to see you at soon.
Great. Thank you for that. All right. And then our last report for the night is Dr. Zambrino.
Thank you. Always fun to talk about the great things going on in our district. And this meeting is, like others, there are lots of great things going on. So some of the upcoming events that we have, we, you heard a little bit about the Stride for Packer Pride. It's the 5K fun run, so my first time experiencing that, looking forward to that. And that is May 21st at 9:00 AM. And I've heard that it's raised over $100,000 so far since its inception to support students participating in extracurricular activities. So great opportunity to have some fun and make a difference. We have kindergarten camp coming up this summer to help our incoming kinders, you know, make that adjustment. We know, and I still always wonder if it's harder for the kids or mom and dad if it's that first one, but probably a little bit of both. But a great opportunity to get that early start, so become familiar with the new school environment, get that experience of learning about the bus, bus safety, how does lunch work? So how do you get, you know, line up for lunch and get your food? That, some of those rituals and routines, that morning meeting time and learning how to get in a circle. And I always laugh when you're in the, you know, crisscross applesauce and the kids are just learning to sit, right? So our, our kinder teachers are, are amazing at what they do. So that will be coming up August 1st to 4th in 8:30 start time at Lincoln and 9:00 at Kibosha. More information on our website with the Summer Learning 2022. I've been busy getting out and about, meeting with various stakeholders. So as a reminder, I created an entry plan that I really focused a lot on engaging with community, staff, students, parents, community members. And so been at events such as PTA, meeting with our student leadership groups, met with the union leadership, Lions Rotary. I could go on and on. I don't want to bore people, but we did want to create a space, just an open meet and greet opportunity for anybody to pop in and just have a conversation. I'd love to hear from folks what they're excited about, what they're nervous about, or any input for the new superintendent. So we're looking at May 18th at 6:00 PM, but we'll, we'll kick out official communication as we nail that down. And then some things going on around the district earlier. I appreciate Principal Ochaki saying that the school won the Innovation Award from MASSP. MASSP is the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals. That was a very humble way to describe it because he is the winner of that award, so for the Innovation Award. But as any good principal would know, it's teamwork that gets you to those places. So I appreciate that he gave all that credit to his team. But he did win that award for the Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday. And what I think is so great about an award from like that MASSP is that's something brought forward by your peers who are seeing what you're doing and saying, that's great work. So really does elevate in my mind what that kind of an award means. So kudos to Principal Ochaki and team. Last week, amazing high school IB art show. So if anyone was able to get there, I got to walk the exhibit and see what the kids had created for it. Just amazing work, talent that I just don't have. So I always love when you can see things that our kids can do that you know you can't do. So and there's a lot of that in our district and the art show is a good example of that. So congratulations to the kids for their amazing work there. And then also last week, we had the 75th Annual Activities and Athletics Awards Banquet. So seniors who've been participating in activities, getting letters and various activities and sports were acknowledged. What a fun event to just elevate the kids and see the great things going on. Also, I think a little melancholy, there's a couple of parents in the room who were there where you start to realize this is like culminating stuff because they're, these kids are coming to the end of their time with us, but we know they're going to just go on to do great things. I'm sure they'll give back in the future. Prior to prom, one of the things that happens is a mock car crash. Very moving event put on by our SAD, our Students Against Destructive Decisions, partnership with our police and fire departments or state trooper there, others, to support a dramatic reenactment of a crash scene involving drinking and driving. And it's, if you've never seen one, it's very moving. And kids were just silent, you got hundreds of kids sitting there, just you could hear a pin drop, I think. If, you know, just with the focus on like the gravity of what that scene looks like. You know, hard to quantify the impact of it, but if it saves one life or prevents one, you know, child from making that kind of a decision, well worth it. So I want to thank our, our community partners for helping make that possible. May Day baskets are, Kibosha kindergartners, every year they create May Day baskets to, to give to the neighbors. So it's an annual tradition. They'll put, decorate the baskets and put a plant in them and then deliver them to houses in the area. So I have to read because I'm not going to get it right and I hope I get the right rhythm on it. But there's a note on there that says, "A tisket, a tasket, we made a special basket. We filled it up with flowers tight and hung it on the door just right. Happy May Day." So I used to have that in my neighborhood. The kids would come and do that. And so it's really neat when you come home and you find that from the kids at your home. Our middle schoolers engaging in some kind of hands-on learning, looking at how to build bridges and learning about the physics of tension and compression and how that helps bridges and roads stay strong. And you can see there the toothpicks and marshmallows. I've shared it, I know the board has heard this multiple times. My wife is a sixth grade science teacher. So I always see these projects being thought out at home and then hear about how they do. And so it's great to see that happening here in our classrooms and that kind of hands-on learning. And create an idea, what would be the strongest structure? So put that, that scientific process into play, hypothesize, create, test it. Great hands-on learning. Great hands-on learning. We had, at the Senior Center, had a tea party last week. So for each month at Central Square, they host some social event. And last week was the, a tea party. So I got to go and see folks in their, their fancy hats, having a high tea. Amazing spread of snacks and things there, so kudos to our team at Central Square. Next month's social will be Hot Fudge Sundays on June 9th at 11:30. And we'll have some distinguished folks making sundaes, our school board helping to support that. So looking forward to, to an ice cream sundae on the same day as graduation, so excited about that. Lots of opportunities to follow us on social media, so just some links and reminders that we try to stay. Of course, we put out other forms of communication, but we know folks like social media. So you can find us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, lots of ways to find out what's going on in the district. And then just some key important dates, no school on May 30th, that is Memorial Day. Approaching rapidly here, our last day of school on June 8th, with graduation on the 9th. I, it's hard to believe, we're just one month away to the day from graduation. So it's happening fast.
Sure is.
And as always, if you're trying to find materials on our board meetings, they're available on our district website.
All the exciting stuff.
That's right. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of the great things happening in the district.
Thank you. Speaking of exciting stuff, consent items. Consent items are items that come through each meeting that don't need much discussion, including bills payable, claims, and/or any staffing reports. So do I have a motion for approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thanks, down there.
Second.
Thank you, Monica. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, we don't have any policies up for review this meeting, but we do have a business item. Looking for the approval for the South St. Paul, or to approve the resolution relating to the non-renewal of limited contract, long-term substitute teachers. Do you have a motion? Is he going to come up? Do we do a discussion first?
Do your first, first and second.
First and second, yep. Do you have a second, or first?
So moved.
Thanks, Monica. Second?
Second.
Great, and then for discussion, we do have our new HR direction, director, Joel. How do you say your last name, Joel?
Miltier.
Miltier, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So in compliance with Minnesota State Statute, we are required to terminate the teaching contracts of the district's long-term and limited contract substitute teachers. A long-term teacher is one who is filling the role for a teacher who has rights to a position in the district while that teacher is out on leave. If we were to not terminate these contracts for the long-term substitutes, what would happen is we could eventually have two teachers in the position, once the other teacher returns, our regular teacher returns back from leave. So we are putting forth in the resolution tonight to terminate those long-term limited contract teachers so that we still have our one teacher in position as we move into next school year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, board members?
I would just point out that this is a, something that comes up every year. It's a routine, I guess that's a little harsh. But the, the teachers, when they take their, the contracts, they know that this is out there, that this is going to be a temporary as, as it's described, and that it will be terminated at the end of the year. And we're just doing that now. Again, it's backed up by Minnesota State Statute, and it's just part of the process.
Great, thank you. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Inspector Lalliberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
And Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing on our agenda today is our board member reports and informational items. And we can start with Wendy.
Okay. All right, thank you. Since it is only one month of school left, I just got several events here. I just wanted to let people know about them and remind them. And if you are seeking more information on these events, you know, please go to the district website, and there's plenty of information there. So there's several things here. I also had the opportunity last week to attend the Activities Athletics Honors Banquet last, last week. So congratulations to all those students, appreciate their, their time and energy and everything that they've done, and also thank their families for their participation and support for their students in the activities and the athletics. And also coming up now this Wednesday is our Educational Foundation Scholarship Award Ceremony. Looking forward to this, with, with our foundation giving over $440,000 in scholarships to our graduating seniors. So really looking forward to that. And, and also, that has been mentioned, also the Stride for Packer Pride, coming up on May 21st at 9:00 in the morning. I also will be there, I've been volunteering with that for several years, as it is the Schultz family, Peter Schultz, one of our teachers at the high school, and his sister, Ann Schultz Kunehan. Ann, who was a board member with us here for, for many years, and their family supports this program. So it is a lot of fun. And young kids, adults, there's a lot of different ages of people that come to, to run or to walk the, around the street. It's a fun event, so consider coming and supporting the Packer Pride. And another fun thing, and a good thing, coming up next Tuesday, May 17th, if you like tacos, which are really, really good, the Taco Fundraiser at the Croatian Hall on Tuesday, May 17th, which is, which is for our Fill the Backpack campaign, will be there that evening. So it, the tacos are always really, really good. So come down to the Croatian Hall next week on Tuesday for dinner. And then also coming up for our fifth graders, they have the opportunity to come into the secondary building, the high school, on May 12th and 18th at 5:00. If they'd like to have, come in and bring their parents, and they can go on a tour of the building so that they can kind of check the place out. It's a lot of fun so that when they come there in the fall as sixth graders, obviously, they will be a lot more comfortable coming into the building. And so they'll have an idea as to where to go and what to do. And a fundraiser that's coming up for Capoja Education Center, which is the Apex Fund Run, which will be held on Thursday, May 26th. And there's more information on the Capoja website regarding the fund runs for support. And one thing too that I thought, that was coming up for our fifth graders as they start going into the secondary building in the sixth grade in the fall, this Wednesday, well, Wednesday, the 15th and Thursday, the 19th, next week, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school's secondary building, they have the opportunity, if they want to be in, in the band, to take band classes, they can come in and pick instruments, try them out, sample them, look at them, ask the musical instructors any questions that they may have. So next week, Wednesday and Thursday, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the high school. And the Last Dinner Fundraiser coming up for Lincoln Center will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, the 10th, at Culvers in West St. Paul from 4:00 to 7:00. And the fundraiser will be held for them. It is the last one that they're holding for this school year. So if you like Culvers, which I do, you can support Lincoln Center by attending there and with dinner. And one other thing here that have also, Lincoln Center is having a PTA silent auction starting Wednesday and Thursday of this week. It is an online auction. You can go on the Lincoln Center site for more information, where you can just hit, click on the link, and it'll bring you right to, to the items that they're auctioning, and you can place your bid online. So that's something to do too for their PTA. Another thing that the Lincoln Center PTA is doing, coming up this Friday, May 13th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., they're having a lemonade stand. So if you're driving by Lincoln Center, and please stop by, have a glass of lemonade, support their PTA. And I think that sounds like a lot of fun. It's, hopefully, it's going to be plenty warm anyway, you might want something nice, cool to drink. So, so enjoy it and come have some lemonade for the PTA. So, thank you.
All right, that should cover most of everything.
Bye, everybody, night.
Yeah, that's good. Everybody was taking notes. The story about the May Day Baskets that Dr. Zambrino shared just reminded me that I've been fortunate to live close enough to Lincoln Center to share in May baskets through the years. And a few years ago, we needed to replace the storm door on our house. So as we were poking around looking at storm doors, my wife said, now, we have to make sure that the handle is long enough that they can get the May basket on that. The neighbors really do get a kick out of that. They really enjoy it and look forward to it each year, and even use that as the criteria for their storm doors.
Right.
And then, as Wendy mentioned, I also attended the Activities Banquet, and it really is fun. It's, never ceases to amaze me the dedication that some of these students have to their extracurriculars. I mean, they're doing this, obviously, by definition, in addition to all of their academic work. And they put in a tremendous amount of time and effort and have tremendous success. But also watching, it was kind of in the back of the room and able to see all of the kids. They just support each other so much. They had so much fun at that banquet, cheering for each other and appreciating what they have all done. It was a, it's just a great event to be at, so I was glad to be at it last week. And that's it.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time.
I have just one item. So for the mock car crash that you had mentioned, Dr. Zambrino, I actually had a senior approach me and asked me if I had heard about it. And I said, yes, I didn't get a chance to go though. And she said that it was just so, it was scary, and it was, it made her think, made her more aware. But what was probably the most moving part for her was the parent testimonial. And she's very close with her own mother and just said, like, I, I can't imagine making a destructive decision that would hurt my mom. And that they actively, she and her friends actively made different decisions on prom night. So again, you're, you're, if it saves one kid like that, that in itself, it just, I got a little weepy when I heard her say it and just thought, wow, it did, it did change. So, yeah, totally worth it.
Excellent.
All right, um, I mean, quick words, the Athletics and Activities Banquet's gotten a lot of talk tonight. But I also want to talk about the incredible dedication of our staff and coaches who invest so much into our kids and their success. And boy, listening to them talk about the students that were honored and awarded that night, how much our staff cares about our kids, and also like how, how much those athletics and activities contribute to students' feelings about our school and our town, and what this has all meant to them, meant a lot. And also really want to acknowledge Chad Saxauer for just tremendous work inside of our district for all the years that he's been here.
Great, thank you. Monica?
Nothing at this time.
Bill?
Nothing at this time, Chair.
All right, so that is it for our agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, May 9th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Bill. Any discussion? And that motion carries, the meeting's adjourned at?
7:04.
7:04 p.m., thank you.